Hello folks and thank you for tuning into Channel 15 here at Falmouth Community Television. We are at 310 Dillingham Avenue. My name is Jeff Wyman. I'm here today with three very special guests. The Subcommittee for the Planning Board of the Town of Falmouth. Now, the Subcommittee has been tasked with a very important situation in Falmouth here today. They are working on the local comprehensive plan and they have been for a while now. Town meeting in the past, town meeting coming up in the future. We'll be voting on different elements that they've been working on for this local comprehensive plan. So today, we're here to talk with them about the LCP and what the elements are and some of the things that they've done in the past, what we're looking at in the future. So let's get right into it. I will introduce you to Patricia Kerfoot, the Chairperson of the Falmouth Planning Board. Hi, welcome to our studio and you have two of your Subcommittee members with us today.
Thanks for having us here, Jeff. This is very important to get this information out to the community. And the Planning Board appointed us, maybe by default, I'm not sure, as the Local Comprehensive Plan Committee. On my right is Bob Leary and on my left is Jim Fox. And so together, we do a lot of brainstorming.
Absolutely. And thank you both for joining us as well. I know we had a lengthy discussion over in our green room about what we were going to talk about today and I appreciate that. So I want to get right into it. Well, I want to talk about the history of the LCP. We were discussing, maybe about 15, 20 years ago, there was a process that had happened with planning, with elements, and now we're taking another look at it. So break us all up to speed about what happened in the past and where we are today.
As you said, about 20 years ago, the process started. It was a program instituted by the Cape Cod Commission and all of the communities were expected to develop a local comprehensive plan. Falmouth's first plan was accepted in 1996. So you can imagine, there was probably a couple of years of work at least that was put into it before 1996. Since that time, it has been updated twice. So we are on the fourth iteration of the plan. Now, what makes us different is that the elements of the first plan were pretty much determined by the Cape Cod Commission. They had an outline that they envisioned that every community could fit into. What we did is we took a second look at this and said, wait a minute. We're going to start from ground zero and create a new plan. That's why it's taking us a considerable time. So from 2005, which was the date of the last one, and in theory, they're to be updated every five years, to the present time, which we're going into 10 years later now, we have worked diligently on what Falmouth is as a community and what elements do we carry forward, what don't we? So this is what we're doing now. The prior plans were sort of backwards looking. We started out saying, no, we can't do that. We're looking forward to the next 50 to 100 years. When you consider that I've been in Falmouth 44 years, 50 is not a daunting timeframe to look at. And you grew up pretty much here and you're a wash of shore like I am, I believe, Bob.
Yeah, 32 years.
Yeah, so it's not a daunting timeframe. One could say 100 years is a rather daunting timeframe. Hmm, that is where we get into the vision part of it. We really couldn't begin to write a plan unless we kept vision at the forefront. We need to have a clear vision as to what we're dealing with. We also know that change is inevitable. So the plan that we create has to be very forward-looking and capable of dealing with future change. Does anybody want to pipe in here about...
Well, you had mentioned in the past, the plan was, you know, looking backwards at what we have done and we're really looking where we're going. I mean, I mean, it's very much like a compass, you know, where...
It's a real paradigm shift. I mean, to look at what we have been and then really trying to look 50 years down the road. We're looking at different elements. We're going, well, that may not be the case 50 to 100 years from now. We may not, this may not even exist, this technology or that technology or this road or whatever. It may not exist. So we really had to free our minds a lot to do this and that's not easy.
So vision, vision is key. Now, is it difficult amongst the three of you or amongst the whole Planning Board when you have this term of vision? How do you go through the process to get yourselves on the same page?
We go wild, don't we, sometimes?
Well, we reel each other in. I mean, what happens is we get going on a subject and then we'll get into more and more detail and then everybody goes, wait a minute, that's really an action plan. Where is, you know, we keep coming back. Pat was really instrumental in making sure that this plan has a format that we really have goals. And the goals are pretty general, that cover the needs of what we're talking about. And the policies, we want to keep them limited, fall right under those goals. And then everything else is, somebody comes up, like, you know, somebody mentioned, well, what about, you know, you mentioned earlier forestry, where does that fall in? Well, you know, that falls into our land use and that's going to be an action item. We're not going to talk about that as part of the plan. For us, the most important part is to have the goals and then the policies that can be all encompassing in that aspect. So we, I get constantly corrected, oh, that's really an action item and we go, yeah, you're right. So we reel each other in.
It's the true definition of brainstorming. I mean, we throw a lot of stuff out there and like I said before, some sticks to the wall, some doesn't. But we have such mutual respect for each other, which I find is consistent throughout the board, that we're not afraid to throw something out there for fear somebody's going to say, oh, that's stupid or that will never work. We all kind of look at it and go, well, you know, let's look at this a little bit more. So there's a lot of respect. I think that's what makes this group work so well.
And we extend that to the Planning Board too.
Yes, yeah.
That Bob's comments are very much extended. I would be remiss to, you see the three of us here, but very integral to this planning process is Marlene McCollum, our Assistant Planner. She's extremely knowledgeable. I've worked with her for a number of years and she provides a lot of the information to us. She, to some degree, directs our conversation. And she reels in, she reels us in when we get too far flung and says, wait, you're way off topic now.
And provides us with, one thing about this board, this group, we have homework. She really gives us, every week, you know, it might only have a couple of pages, but if you look at it carefully, there's links into it that go on and on and on. I mean, you know, we meet for an hour and a half, but there's probably, there's two hours of preparation work, at least, if you keep up with it. And so, I mean, our staff make sure that they provide us with as much information as they can find on the subjects that we're dealing with.
And it's not just information that's guiding us towards something they want. It's very diverse. We get both sides of the conversation with a lot of the issues that we look at.
So having Falmouth Town Staff as backup and information...
That was past point.
Absolutely critical. I would just really be remiss if I didn't point this out.
Wouldn't happen.
And the other component to this is the Selectmen. The joint meetings we've had with them have been very productive. I think that they feel that they are in on this whole process, which gives them some ownership of it. So I think between the two boards, the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen, it's a key component to make anything work and to get buy-in by the different town entities.
Yeah, because going forward in a town meeting for some of these things, they need to give the recommendation and then it has to go to a town meeting and then they have to discuss it as well. You've all been mentioning the word "element" here inside of the local comprehensive plan. So an umbrella kind of idea is you have the local comprehensive plan as the top tier of an umbrella and then there's different elements to it. Tell me about some of these elements and some of the ones that have been worked on and passed already through town meeting and some of the ones that you are working on now and hopefully in the spring will be discussed.
We go back to 2013 for the initial town meeting review of some elements. And in that case, we had three of them passed. Leading up to that, again, when I said we were looking at this whole thing with different eyes, we combined water and wastewater because they were inextricably linked, whereas they had been separated in the other iterations of the comprehensive plan. So that one was passed at the 2013 town meeting. Economic sustainability, unless you have a healthy economy in a town, you're not going to survive very well as a town. That one was passed and energy was passed. Now, when we say it was passed by town meeting, I think you and the public should understand that town meeting passes the goal or goals. We try to keep it for each element to one goal. With water and wastewater, we really needed to, we couldn't combine them effectively into one. We try to keep the policies to three, maybe four, as we go. Town meeting only passes those because, when we're talking about having a plan that lasts for 50 to 100 years, we're talking about more generic statements. So what do we want Falmouth to look like? What kind of a town is Falmouth? Who or what is Falmouth? And that's where the goal comes in. It sets the future direction that actions have to take. The policies kind of set the actions going that would gain that goal.
That's where we glean the action items from. If we have a policy that says such and such, then we will have an item or an action item that will address that policy. So we get into the nitty-gritty and the action items change. If, within a year, we meet one of the action items, we cross that off and then maybe something rises up or something more urgent comes in place. You know, who knows? You have a main, water main break or something to that effect that might require skipping over a couple of action items. But the action items tend to be the capital investment types of things that town meeting would then vote on. So I don't want it to sound like town meeting gets to vote on the goals and policies and then that's it and then they have no say in anything else. Town meeting has a lot of say in what happens because the action items are all pretty much town meeting agenda items because it could be zoning, it could be capital improvements, it could be anything like that.
So some examples of elements are energy, transportation, housing. A big one that we discussed before was coastal resilience. Now, that has passed already, you had mentioned to me?
It did. It passed in November of this year.
Yep. And that was a new element that wasn't previously on the past 15, 20 years ago LCPs. Talk to me a little bit about the coastal resiliency elements.
Not only, Jeff, was it a new element that wasn't on the previous ones. We were making this out of whole cloth. We had nobody else to look at. And so we, it was a very interesting development and the Selectmen were very much involved in the development of this too. We had a Saturday morning workshop that they were quite enthusiastic about. Where all of this with coastal resiliency is relatively new and the importance of it came about with Hurricane Sandy and what happened to New York City. We forget, we were the bullseye until it took a left. And so we're, as Brian says, Brian Curry, our Town Planner, we're going to school on Sandy. And a lot of what we did with resiliency was bring the Selectmen up to date with the knowledge that had been gained through Marlene and Brian's diligence in giving us information and seeking their input as to what was important to them. But we also essentially first came out with ideas that we put together that they could comment on.
And we also, I mean, I had a learning process in this aspect of it. I mean, I've always been, you know, trying to, I've always lived on the coast and, you know, and the transport, everything along being the Falmouth. I think our beaches and our access to the waterways are, to me, what I like about Falmouth. I think that's what makes Falmouth different. But we had a conversation with the conservation people. We had Betsy Gladfeller come in and, you know, I was concerned, you know, about preserving the beaches and, you know, our access to them. And then we talked with her and she said, well, you know, if we had better estuaries and, you know, let's say you had areas to absorb the shock up at Little Pond and those other areas up inland, is that going to help save our beaches? And she said, yes. And that's really, I said, now we're talking about it. Now we got a plan where we're just not saying no. We're actually using the knowledge we have and bringing in knowledge from other areas to actually keep some of the things we have and not just abandoning it and walking away. She was, she made it clear that in order to achieve some of our goals, we had to be looking up at these estuaries will help us and absorb that shock and take the beating off on the hurricane because the water has a chance to go in slowly and back. So that was a learning process and that's what we do a lot. We invite all different groups to come in and talk to us and tell us their point of view. And we've done it, every time we do, every time we go out something, it's not, we really have a collection of data meeting and we bring, we bring people in from everywhere and we listen to them, we talk, and then we start working on the plan. It's not something that we just make up, oh, we think we should do this.
Well, one of the lessons from Sandy that we learned when hurricanes hit, power lines go down, everybody says, oh, we should be burying all our power lines. Well, they found sand in underground power lines a mile inland from the coast in New York. And that, so that really isn't an answer to that problem. So there's got to be other solutions to that, but who would have thought that? I would, never would have thought that you'd have sand a mile inland inside your power lines.
So communication is key and that seems to be part of each of the elements that you're talking about. How is it that you reach out and communicate to different boards and committees and organizations in town, say Water Quality Management Committee with Eric Turkington and those types of groups? How does the impetus to this communication work and how do you involve them with your process?
They came in and sat with us.
Yeah, we invite them into our meetings.
Yeah, we had, they all came, they, we went, at length, we spent a lot of time with them.
Either the whole group or individual members of the group that convey what they want and what we are saying, so...
They had a big impact on us. They turned us a little bit, we listened to what they were saying.
With water amongst water.
Right. And I had, you know, thought, I evolve a lot during this process. I generally try to not come in with a preconceived notion, but everyone carries their baggage into a room. But I end up learning more in our meetings than I ever thought I would. And the wastewater people pretty, made it pretty clear, you know. We had talked about, I remember, I had sat out, there's no other solution other than sewers. And they said, well, wait a minute, you know. And they came at us really hard, we got to talk about other things. And after listening to it, it became pretty clear, we at least got to try these other things. And so instead of us just saying, oh, we're going to sewer everywhere. And we said, no, we're going to try other alternatives, we're going to keep the door open. And they were very instrumental in that part of the plan.
This is a process. I think that's maybe what you're starting to gather here. The process starts with us talking. Does what we're talking about rise to the level of an element? If it does, then who do we invite in to talk to to gather as much information as we can? Then we start, as Bob says, throwing stuff at the wall, seeing what sticks. After that, and we get it to something that we think is okay for our goal and our policies, we bring it to the Planning Board. We may bring it to the Planning Board several times. And after that, we try to get it before the Selectmen if it is something that they are interested in more than anything. With water and wastewater, we put the final, I think, a couple of times before the DPW to get their comments as to how it read because they gave us so much valuable input as to what needed to be done. And so this is the process. Then, of course, we go to town meeting too and we'll continue as the action items, as Bob said. The other thing that I think that needs to be brought out here too is we have five guiding principles. We have enlarged and subtracted these as time went on. Currently, the big one is vision. We have to have our vision. It has to, whatever we do, has to go towards sustainability of the community into the future. We have to be very flexible. We have no idea what life is going to be like in 75 years. So whatever we do with the goal and policies has to encourage flexibility. We have to encourage with whatever we do, the resilience of the community. How is the community going to keep on putting along? And big, so I'm doing the bookends, the big bookends is communication. So vision and communication, I think, are the two really big ones.
And determining what rises to be an element also, we've looked at some things and we ask ourselves, does the town, does this really have anything to do with the town and the town's government, the town's infrastructure? And we have thrown out items that we thought, or have been in the past, an element because we felt that that wasn't something that the town had any input on.
And so what were some of those? Give me a couple of examples that's interesting.
We had culture and...
We didn't really, what we did, we decided that what they really fit into our plan, but as part of our capital structure, that we're going to have facilities for those needs. You know what I mean? That, you know, that we're going to have medical facilities, we're going to have social facilities. That as a board, we plan the places where, and the avenues and it's up to the operators of the town from year to year to fill in all those, you know, the smaller pieces of that. So we kind of just made it still following our plan, but not raised to the level of an element.
And the arts and culture are still there.
Still there.
But we're not saying that it rises to the state of an element because the question came up from Marlene, well, whose culture, whose art?
Are we going to decide that?
Are we going to decide that?
Is that up to us? And that's why we, that was really the, we got to things, well, that's not really our decision. Our decision is that we are going to have facilities from now and in the future for things like that.
Well, let's talk about how we came up with this. We were having difficulties and so we were talking about quality of life. Well, I don't remember, was it Marlene or was it, it's one of us anyway. So, well, maybe we ought to talk about quality of life as a brand-new element that we can fold some of these things into. Then for two meetings, we struggled. Well, what are we talking about? And as Bob said, who commands quality of life? Does the government have anything to say about it? The fact that we were struggling so much with that definition, but what we, all of us came up with is it's not the level of an element, but it is incredibly important. And this would be covered in the whole introduction as to how quality of life is really all of these things that we're talking about. So there we went from how do we deal with things that we don't think fit as an element, but there definitely can't be left out? Can we call it a quality of life? No, that's definitely not an element. And circle around to figure out how we can incorporate these things that we all consider to be very important in Falmouth's future and the type of life that we live as a community.
All the elements affect the quality of life here.
Right, Ed.
Excellent. So Spring Town Meeting is coming up, April 13th. You're all discussing a few elements right now that you're going to be bringing to Spring Town Meeting. What are those elements and what have the discussions been like thus far?
We're talking about one right now. And that is housing.
A biggie.
That is huge, as you may or may not know and the viewing audience may or may not know. There was a housing needs study that was done and I understand that Judy Barrett, whose company the town contracted with, just got an award for that study. So that tells you how important and well-done it was. The study pointed out a bunch of needs for Falmouth, but we had been working on this all along too. And again, it's that process. The prior plan called for affordable housing. And I know I really objected. I think, and I think all three of us found some objectionable, something objectionable about that because housing needs in Falmouth are way beyond just affordable. Affordability is one of the requirements. So the goal out of that discussion became housing for everybody. And then there was some, well, is everybody right? Is it a good goal? And yeah, after discussing that for a while, we thought, yes. A healthy community has to have housing, one quality of which is affordability, for everyone that we need as a healthy community.
We're a resort community. We need resort-type, we always have been for a long, at least throughout my life and even beforehand from when I read, for 100 years, people have been coming to Falmouth to vacation in summer and enjoy it. So if we ignore that component in the future, we're not, that's a giant town. We also have to have workforce housing for people. That is very, very important. The people that come here to retire, I mean, they want to, they have, they want their neighborhoods. They want to be close to downtown. They have things they want. We need to have affordable housing too and that's where we really came up with going around and around and then someone said, housing for everybody, and we said, you know, let's focus on that. So that, I mean, that's something involved. But we had Judy come in and give her presentation to us for an hour or two. We had...
Joint meeting with the Selectmen.
Joint meeting with the Selectmen.
Annie Seganek is also a part of that process.
Annie Seganek had come in, Mike Lazo had come in, housing. We had taken the time to listen to everybody and then we really go to work. So I mean, that's, that's part of our committee is the work involved. It's homework and research and listening.
But before this actually comes up in town meeting this spring, we have said to our professional staff that one of the low-hanging fruit items that we could pick out of this housing study report is the accessory apartment bylaw.
We're jumping on an action item before we even put our plan out there just because we...
We can do it.
Easy pickings, low-hanging fruit. We've decided this is, well, we all listened to them say the same thing over and over again. I even re-watched the thing last night when they had it on television, they brought it up again, that it was really something that was out there. And so we said, well, why are we talking about this? Let's get it going. And in our last meeting, we did jump ahead of ourselves and actually make it an action item that we're getting on, but it'll be in our plan to do that anyway.
Now, one could think that this would be an easy thing to do. Oh, you just change the bylaws, make it more usable. Uh-uh. Because right now, accessory apartments incorporate the whole of Falmouth and you can't just do a wholesale change. You have to look at the ramifications of what you're dealing with. What are the end results that you want from this bylaw? So it's going to be far more involved than just tweaking the bylaw. And our staff is going to be looking at that very closely and coming back with recommendations.
Well, the process is we create the bylaw and then the zones where it's going to fit.
The process is, and even creating the bylaw, that, I've been on the board for about four, four or five years now. I jumped right into the wind turbine the day, first day I sat down, I said, what have I got myself into? Oh my God. But what a process to learn because we heard from everybody, everyone. The town gets to come to us. They get to come to our discussions. They, we have to listen to everybody. They bring in their experts and they bring, the experts bring experts. And we go on and on and we listen to everybody, we have discussion. And after, this is the Planning Board as a whole, not this group. I'm jumping, but it's part of the process. After 20 hours or 15 of listening to it, then we go to work. So I mean, that's, that's kind of the process. We are having, as part of our local comprehensive plan, we were now, we reached out and we're doing the listing and it came to be clear to us as a group and the Planning Board that the accessory apartment bylaws, we'll be talking about housing for the next 20 years, maybe longer. This is something we can make sense, just get started on this on a parallel path with everything else. So we jumped on that last week.
Well, it's, one of the instigators for this whole thing is we had talked as our group and with the Planning Board that we would like to see some greater infill density. And accessory housing can lead to greater infill density. So that leads to, well, we don't necessarily want to do wholesale all over town. So maybe we're going to have to do a pilot study by allowing it in a particular area to see how it works.
There's another element, not element, another component that's similar is we did a conversion bylaw in the past. And it was, I think it was 1980, we had, Falmouth, our predecessors were dealing with the same problems we are now. They have been for a long time. And we had many big old structures in the downtown part of town, around the beaches and everything, locked in on small lots and they were being, at that point, some were being run down and let go. So someone came up with the idea that, well, if they're in the right place, why can't we convert them? So someone came up with the idea that, well, if they're in the right place, why can't we convert them? And that's changing into apartments or condominiums. And they came up with a bylaw, if your property existed at this date or before, you have the right to convert it. And it's on the books right now, and it's used all the time. So you can take a big old house and make it into four units. And that's one way to create housing right away. We didn't have that many of them, and it was also just on a specific date that became restrictive. So not after the first, I don't know how many happened, I know about ten that I can list, but there wasn't that many, the supply ended. One of the things that we're going to discuss, and we're going to bring in people to talk about, can we change that date? Can we bring it forward? Or can it be any property? But we're going to have to talk and listen to the neighborhoods. So we get to revisit what we've done in the past and learn from what worked and what didn't, and then tweak it up a little bit. But that's all part of our putting the action, that's more of a planning board issue than this board, but it's part of the same thing. So we look at, as we go and deal with housing, we do talk about the action items. But they're not really things that get approved. But that, we make sure that the goals and policies that we put to town meeting will allow for some of these ideas that we have in our brainstorming session to actually get into the plan.
Excellent. Again, communication is key, bringing in expertise, hearing from the community, discussing with the board of selectmen. And you have been regularly, it seems almost now, been meeting with the board of selectmen to go through some of these elements. Now, you're in the middle of the housing element now. Hopefully bringing that a completed recommendation to town meeting in the spring. What about beyond that? Have you had any vision as to what some of the elements beyond housing are going to be?
Yeah, we actually have decided to take up transportation. And the reason for that one above any of the others that we might have taken up is that we have a study going on right now with an engineering report due out for, let's see, it's Oxbow Road coming back through town and up to Jones Road, Route twenty-eight, as to what they might recommend for changes of that roadway. As you know, there are intersection changes going on, a lot of things. And a lot of it tends to be hodgepodge. This is a look all along, and it comes out of state funding, so along that whole thing. The major reason, right now that we're looking at transportation is that we will be quite involved with the engineering firm in conversation with them as to what we can envision as needs into the future for transportation, so that whatever comes out of that study won't stand in the way of what we might envision as future needs. I know I had said earlier, this little decision can be a tyrannical thing for the future. It can really constrain what we could do in the future. So as far as we can look ahead, we would like to be involved to say, we don't think that's such a good idea because we can see this as the future. And I know we had talked earlier and asked, threw a question back at you, Jeff, what do you think of when we say transportation?
That was a trick question.
Yeah, I sure was.
You know, it brings to light an exercise that we did that I thought it was a really great learning process that our staff did. Our staff gave us an assignment to get a blank map of the town. No roads, no, nothing, just take a look at our town.
Which I think is a really cool idea.
Okay. And come back with, you know, where you see the vision, starting over again, and where you see, and where the, we won't call them roads, where our corridors of communication and transportation would be. But, you know, we all, almost all of us came back with a similar plan. Because of the nature of our town with all the fingers and pawns, you really can't run, you know, basically, the main corridor was Route twenty-eight. It was already decided for us. I'm sure that the first Indians that were here came, that's the way they came up and down, because going around up and down the other way would have been a long way around. And we had a main road going out of town linking up from there. So that was a real, real working process. It gave us a chance to start fresh, thinking about corridors. And then when we did our roads, I mean, we, we're talking about, maybe with this study, and it may be a long time from now, but there'll be multiple methods of communication along those corridors. And, you know, and it's not going to be, you know, Route twenty-eight. It will be Route twenty-eight, but it could have bike paths, public transportation, other means of transportation we don't even know about. But we know generally it's going to go in that location.
Yeah, we want to get ahead of the curve, because I find that we're constantly reacting to things. And part of the reason I wanted to be on this committee was to be proactive, so that we can look into the future and see where the problems might lie and what we could do to prevent them.
There is the complete streets concept, and this is what we're working towards. And that is, it's not just the street, it's the other things for transportation, if you will, for lack of anything better. Because as you pointed out, or somebody did, maybe Jim, we might have hovercraft in the future. We don't know. So what we're looking at is a complete street corridor that obviously broad enough, that could be used for alternative modes of transportation right now and for years. The Bike Ways Committee has been looking. How can they get connectability with all these things? Well, if we had planned our streets to be wide enough to begin with, we could be having that currently without any discussion. If there would be enough property to just...
And you look at what Mashby's done, Great Neck Road and One Thirty, there's a nice bike path along that section of roadway. I mean, it goes for miles. So they actually put some thought into it.
And you want to, again, like you're saying, leave room for future technologies that we've maybe just been dabbling with or haven't heard of yet. And I've been reading stories about solar panel roads.
Oh, yeah.
You guys have heard about that. So how does an element like that go into some kind of construction and open planning for complete streets? It's interesting stuff.
Yeah.
If you're going to use that, it's going to be conversion of the streets that are there. And I don't see that as happening until we talk about major repaving.
Those solar panels actually are pavement, and they go to the fact that they change, you can manage the traffic, they can have lights in them, they can manage everything.
No plowing, from what I've heard.
But they're a long ways away. But the thing is, we try to make sure that if, when that technology is available, that it still fits in our plan. And that's the real challenge, that we have to take into consideration is, not that we're going to say, oh, we're going to put solar-powered panels on all the roads, and that's going to be our future. No, we're going to say, our transport corridors are going to be here, and hopefully those will fit in, because we're trying to take them into consideration and keep an open mind about the future.
And we've also discussed future water sources. Are we going to have Long Pond as a water source, a top-surface water source? That may not be the case. So does that allow for a development further down, up along the shores of Long Pond? It fits in with a vision of trying to keep your population close to town and your infrastructure and your sewer or transportation corridors. All that kind of fits in nicely with that.
That was really my first go. And I remember talking about, we brought Ray Jack in and some other people, and I asked the question, and he gave me a great answer. I said, because I thought our job was to plan for the future, does Falmouth have the water capacity for their towns near the future? And they, he basically said, well, we have, it's in place if we manage it. You know, that they had gone and put in areas around all the wells where the houses weren't built in close, you know, they created wellhead protection areas. And he identified where all the wells are. And all we really need to do is, of course, the biggest problem was the open, the Long Pond issue. But as we're now spending forty million dollars for a water treatment plant and get that under consideration. So he did assure us that there's plenty of, if it's managed properly, that it's in the ground, the aquifers are here, and it's just up to us to manage it properly. So I was, I felt really good after hearing that, because the last thing, I mean, you've got to have water, you've got to have air, you've got to have food to live. And if we were, if we ran out of water, we wouldn't really have a town. And he said, no, it's here, so we can plan on and managing it properly.
That's comforting.
Yeah. Well, that's why, that's where the two elements came together.
Yeah.
Because then we always said, well, yeah, as long as we don't pollute it all with wastewater. And then we realized...
They're linked.
They're linked. That was a nuance of one element, two different discussions, coming into one element and realizing they're linked forever. And we've discussed all kinds of things along that line, but...
Well, there are towns also that do water reuse.
Didn't want to go there.
No. It's, how do we retrofit, do we? And when I'm talking about water reuse, I'm talking about some of the towns in California use this, I want to call it gray water, but it's not exactly, it's purified. They use it for irrigation. Water out there is very dear. And so I suspect a lot of the technologies that we may be looking at in the future will have been developed in California, used in California.
Even for home water treatment, there are systems already in place that will do that, that produce potable water at the end of the cycle. And they're new and they're not too common yet, but that might be one of the solutions, too.
We're surrounded by water.
Yeah.
Desalination is also being done. But I think that our engineering department kind of assured us anyways that we have, we have a, if we fix the things we've already done wrong to it, we have a very viable aquifer here that can carry us into the foreseeable future, as long as we're careful.
Speaking of future, communication, involvement with the public, communication outward from you folks. Timeframes for revisiting an almost or a semi-never-completed local comprehensive plan. We were talking before, of course, it's never going to be completed, because this will be something you want to revisit every so often. What is the timeframe of revisiting a plan like this? And are some elements looked at more often than others?
I'm not sure if it's going to be a five-year review. We haven't really discussed that yet. That might be something that comes at the end of this, that we review it in five years, and we look at the goals and policies and say, do they still fit? But the action items are a living thing. They will always change, they will always have things added to them. And we thought that would make it a more user-friendly document, opposed to rewriting everything, the goals and the policies, that these can slip in and out, interchangeable, and very easily done. Because, as I mentioned earlier, an action item could be just one town meeting agenda item.
Yeah. Think of them as Warren articles. You know, basically, the things that the town meeting votes on, they all fit in, if they're done right, they all fit into our plan.
And the goals and policies are so broad, and again, it gets down to the quality of life in Falmouth and what Falmouth is. So do we want to change the goal of housing for everyone, to say, housing for only a certain population? No, I don't think we'd ever want to do that. So that's why they're so broad, so that we don't have to keep rewriting this.
We actually picked some pretty safe goals.
Yeah.
Our overriding goal in writing this plan was that our goals and policies would, as far as we could make it, live for that fifty to one hundred years, so that we shouldn't have to look at it again with the intensity that we're putting into it right now. I know we hadn't really talked about it, but when I was talking with Brian the other day, he said he loves this process going on, because we're constantly reviewing, which we are.
And we've talked that, you know, we're not going to be on the planning board forever, but that this group will probably always exist, and when we're either, when we're totally done and they have all been passed, that then we're looking at, we'll start looking at action items and what needed to be, what's been done, what could be crossed off, what needs to be pushed harder because it wasn't done. And there'll be the keeper of the plan. So basically, it's going to go on forever.
So it sounds like we've covered most things that we had set our goals to discuss. If folks want to get involved in the process for communicating to you from the public's perspective, are there email addresses?
Planning office.
Planning office, and that's accessible?
It's important not to communicate with us as individually, because if you ever are an applicant or doing anything and you're talking to one of us, it kind of, it's not supposed to happen that way. Everything is supposed to go through the planners, and everybody gets it all at the same time. That channel of communication, I guess, not this group per se, but as a planning board, we are a quasi-judicial board that rules on it, and it's called an ex parte communication. You're not supposed to do it. You're supposed to talk to the board as a whole, and not pull one of us aside and talk to one person. We, I learned very quickly, my first meeting, I brought, said, oh, I talked to that person. And Brian says, whoa, don't do that. You're never supposed to talk to anyone about any action that's in front of the planning board as a whole. All communication goes through the board, through the information, and then to us all at the same time. And we're not even allowed to send emails back and forth to each other. That's how strict the open-meeting law and they really watch us carefully, to make sure that everything we do can't be overturned, that we follow policy and procedure, we treat everybody fairly. So it's a little cumbersome to follow all the rules, but that's, again, we have a staff that makes sure we do it.
And it's a posted meeting. It's open to the public, every Wednesday, Wednesday at three o'clock.
Wednesday, three o'clock, in Old Water Room at Town Hall.
As are our Tuesday night meetings, they're posted.
The agenda is always posted, and at the end of the agenda, we have public input. So if we're talking about transportation, and there are people who want to come in, listen to the discussion, participate, give us ideas, they're always welcome at those three o'clock meetings.
Excellent. And I'll definitely put the planning office's telephone number and email address in text form at the beginning and end of this program. Is there anything that you all have in your mind that we may not have covered?
I can't stress the importance of this. To me, being a planner-type of person, having been a teacher for my major career, giving the town an outline and a roadmap to kind of avoid the pitfalls that have occurred in the past, I think is extremely important. And the fact that it's just so open and interchangeable, that the structure of this being different from the others, I think is extremely user-friendly and important for this document.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Bob, Pat, and Jim for coming in and having this discussion with us. I'm hoping it was very informative to folks who are reviewing. And be involved, everybody. You know, we just heard three PM every Wednesday, Old Water Room, to get these three folks' ears tuned into your voice. And six-thirty most Tuesday evenings, you'll meet in the selectmen's meeting room. And those meetings, the full planning board meetings are broadcast live on Channel fifteen here at FCTV. So thanks, everyone, for coming in. We'll have you in again, maybe after Springtown Meeting, and discuss how the housing element went through and what's up for transportation.
Great.
And it was a great discussion.
Thank you for having us, Jeff.
Absolutely. Thanks, everyone, for watching, and keep tuning into Channel fifteen here at FCTV for more great informative programming like this.